Headed call to order, the City Council Business Meeting of Tuesday, October 14th. If you would start by joining me in the pledge of allegiance, we'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I start with the roll call, please?
Westwood?
Here.
Conley?
Here.
Daniels?
Davis?
Here.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Here.
Toopin?
Yes.
Here.
All right. I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda and I would... Well, I'll entertain a motion first and then we'll have comments after we get a motion on the floor.
I move to adopt the agenda with a change. If we could, please. I would move to adopt... The change would be to add warrants payable because they are not on here and we need to pay bills. So, I move to add warrants payable after approval of the minutes. So, it would take after five.
Second that.
Okay, so there's a motion on table with the amendment. Thank you for catching that. I apologize that I did not catch that. We'll do better in the future. I will also point out that we do have number 8B that has the little star next to it. So, that is something that... This is... We're fast-tracking this through. So, I just wanted to call that for council's attention and hopefully we'll have discussion there that folks are comfortable with for a readout. Any other discussion at the table before we do a vote? Can I get a roll call, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Toopin?
Yes.
Five zero. Motion passes. Thank you again for the catch. Mayor's comments. First off, I'm going to switch my order just a little bit.
A minute. You're definitely...
Oh, I'm sorry. I shall...
Minute.
Oh, minute. Sorry. Thank you. I will entertain a motion regarding the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes as written.
I second.
Discussion at the table.
Why do we get a second copy?
Says I forgot to send it out. I do got a paper copy.
Oh, I got it.
Those of you that remember... Yeah, I said I had it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So, once they got it electronic, it was in town.
Okay. That's cool.
Discussion at the table regarding the minutes. Harry Nun. Can we get a roll call, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Toopin?
Abstain. Wasn't here.
Now warrants payable.
So, that's four zero. Motion passes. And now I'll put a check mark next to it because I already had a check mark, which is why I missed it. I even wrote down that... All right. I will entertain a motion for warrants payable.
I would move to approve warrants payable.
I'll second that.
In the total amount of... Last page. Six hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents.
I'll second that.
So, I have a motion from Councilmember Conley, a second from Councilmember Toopin. Discussion at the table. Sandy, you went through it. Do you want to ask some?
I have some questions because on page three of thirteen, I noticed that there was a line for fax and nobody faxes anymore. But apparently... I mean, really. But apparently it's for the line coming into the copier to fax. So, it's actually for a telephone line.
And that's split across several departments. One of the concerns is that when you're going through and looking at it, it looks like, "We really have seven fax lines coming in?"
Or what... Yeah. It was odd.
Yeah.
Then on page four, I noticed that the last time I signed warrants and I saw it again, is that the Tesla Chargers, last time I think it was two hundred and forty dollars. This time it's two hundred and thirty-five, fifty-four. I'm just thinking that that's twenty-five hundred dollars a year for...
Is that a monthly?
Yeah.
It depends on how many people use it.
So...
During the summer, it's a lot higher than...
So, it's just getting to the point that maybe it would warrant putting a meter on it or something.
Do we still have the little box there where people can donate?
Yeah. We pull the donations a week or so from the box and I think there was four hundred and some dollars.
Oh. Oh, last night.
They pay for them once or...
Yeah. That's great.
So, is... Okay.
So, it's just an FYI to kind of... I think we should keep... Kind of look at it. I also had the question, why on page five at the bottom for the recycling center? I didn't read propane for recycling center. I just read that we were buying from AY Supply recycling supplies. And it seemed silly to buy recycling supplies from...
That's a funny...
Yeah. But...
So, it's the propane for the...
It's the propane. Yeah. So, that was a question. And I... We are paying Tetra Tech, who is the people that are leveling Bastian's property for nineteen thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars.
I think we came in under budget as well.
So, there's that. And I just wanted to point out that the water bypass project, we paid two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-six cents in one check. And I just noticed that the last page, if you have these warrants, is interesting in that the water was three hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. Sewer was thirty-four thousand. So, a lot of that, six hundred and fifty thousand, more than half of it was to the water project. I did...
And again, I'd just like to publicly thank council for taking the time to go through that and for asking the questions. As Councilman Conley was going through it, you two was asking questions and some of them I knew the answer to and the ones I didn't know the answer to, I said, "Let me go check and find that out." And I, like I said, welcome an additional set of eyes on there. That's part of what we do. And again, those are always available to the public to go through and review as well upfront. But I do appreciate council that every time we do this, there are two council members that go through and look at that critically and so thank you for that.
I did have a question on it before we pass up on it. There was nineteen hundred dollars for a new computer for, I want to say, Public Works.
Mm-hmm. There's the one of us.
Okay. And just curiosity on that more than anything is, you know, I've recently bought this computer, which is a pretty powerful little guy. Again, I do a lot of 3D rendering, that kind of thing, and mine was still around four hundred dollars less.
Because ours includes IT.
Okay. That's okay.
To get it connected and all that stuff.
Okay.
Because that includes them setting it up before we even get it up here.
So, that was the purchase as well as all the initial setup and stuff?
Okay.
Yeah, that's why it's a little...
And isn't... Is that the one... Is that the portable they're using for GIS stuff or...
No, this is their main one up there and he did need bigger requirements because of the GIS.
And that's what I was going to ask is how robust of a service it was needed because of the GIS or what other services they might be using or programs.
Yeah. It was mainly getting it like the, I don't know, tax terms or whatever. But for the GIS system and stuff, you needed it more.
And I do know when I've been up there with the old system, there's a lot of times we were waiting on it and/or crashed. So, I'm happy to see that kind of dress.
Funds are not playing, you know, Battlefield Six that just came out first.
We're playing... Yeah, we're playing GIS versus Twenty Twenty Six.
Let's make sure Steam isn't like installed and good.
Yeah. Okay. Other comments or questions?
No, that's all I had. Also, whatever boots they got looked really nice. Continue. There was some new boots bought for Unifarms and they looked really...
Oh, that was for the boots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your two hundred and sixty-five dollar boots.
So, you're saying we could start, you know, a calendar with all of them? Pay some money?
Boots of...
Just some boots. Just pictures of the boots.
I mean, over four hundred dollars in boots spent this go. So, and again, you're out there doing your thing. You want good boots, but I'm like, "Man."
I hope people warm, I hope.
Two sixty-five for boots. Let's do this some damn way. It's not a swear.
Further discussion at the table regarding warrants payable. Harry Nun, can I get a vote, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Toopin?
Yes.
Five zero. Motion passes. Now, I'm going to put check marks next to that. Now, we're down to mayor's comments and reports. Due to the nature of what is happening right now, I am going to just check and see if that message I got just within... It was not from Public Works Director. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to take a moment and turn mine to do not disturb. And again, if you're within council chambers and would silence your phone. I'm going to arrange my order just a little bit. The sixteen-inch... Sixteen-inch water bypass to the West Bench is going on today. It was scheduled to be done at four. It is still going on there, still working on it and will continue working on it. That was that last text message I had that I was working on before I started the meeting. There was a couple of problems that have been encountered. We try to anticipate all of those. We did a test last Friday to make sure that the valve we were using was turning off the valve course. It was. This morning, we found out it was also turning off the rest of downtown as well. So, we had about an hour. We had to... The phone started ringing and getting very active and they went and turned that back on and went and dug and found an entirely different valve that they didn't know was there. So, that added about an hour. So far, it's been going really well, but they're just dealing with the problems that come up while they're there. So, apologies. I do know that because the hill is on an angle, not everybody was actually out of water right off of that. So, at two o'clock, people, if you were on the uphill side of things, you could still go in and flush your toilets and it would refill. And we did go around and we've worked with all of the property management companies. And then I checked with elderly folks in my direct area and made sure that they had buckets and stuff. So, we've done what we can and they will continue working on that until that gets up tonight. What's next? This is that... What they put in tonight is a temporary pressure-reducing valve or PRV in the main manhole, right as you turn off on Lazy M there. And so, that gets that in place. And then what's next is most immediately is they'll be doing the road patching later this week and probably done by next week and then White Avenue will be up and open again. Then the next stage is the building that's right there in the corner of Lazy M and Seventy-Eight, the white building, is going to be torn down. So, because we're getting away from the motorized pumps and everything to get things up there and going to a gravity fed with the pressure-reducing valve, so they will put in the permanent PRV, kind of a target date right now is that'll be done by the end of November. So, there'll be one more switch over. It'll just be very, very quick to go from the temporary PRV to the full-time PRV. So, that has some major health and safety implications as far as fire flow up there. It's been on the to-do list for years and years, if not decades. So, it's... I'm glad to have that one done. So, that's where we are on that. And maybe right before we're done with the meeting, I'll check messages and see if I have an update from Mike during correspondence. But that's where they are and they will continue working on it until it's there. Next topic of update, Rocky Fork. Friday was the last day for anybody to file protests. No protests were received, therefore, no bodies needed to be hidden over the weekend. And we are moving forward. They are doing mitigation this week, which you won't be able to see from the outside, which is basically going in and taking out the thermometers that have mercury in them. On Friday, they will be setting up the fences. On Monday, they will be moving the large equipment in. On Tuesday, they will be moving the large building out. That is anticipated to take less than two weeks for that to kind of be done. So, the day we have all been awaiting.
And being hauled out on flatbeds, they take it?
There... I'm not sure what all the different... What the equipment is that they're doing. So, they are doing that. They are working with Tetra Tech to make sure when they come in and backfill it, there are several testing things and soil compressions and things that they have to do. They are keeping the weather vane off the top as well as a couple of large rocks that we identified for kind of the memorial... Memorialization of the park in the future. But I went and met with the head of the demolition company yesterday. It was a very pleasant meeting to have. I was... I was... I've been looking forward to that meeting a long time.
Question. In terms of traffic, how will it affect at all?
I don't think it's going to be... The only thing that's going to affect traffic at all is they are going to be hooking up to a fire hose for water that they need throughout that process. And I don't know if that's the dirt compression. We didn't get that all worked out, but what we're going to do is we are going to meter that water. And presumably, what we're going to do is have them bill us and then we can get reimbursed from the funding agencies for that. But there will be like a... Depending on which fire hydrant we're able to use, they bring equipment so that you can drive over it. It's just like a little above ground over to protect it.
Yeah, mostly just like not going to be blocking off part of the street or anything.
No. There's not going to be any traffic impact. But other than looky-loos, I'm sure will...
Oh, yeah.
Will impact a little bit of traffic.
All right. Unless you bring your chair and sit there on Nineteenth Street to watch. Well, I got my office right there. I can look through my window.
When it is down, we're back to a flat field and the grass seed has been thrown on it, which is all the further the plans go for this point. I was reminded that I have already committed to marshmallows. So, I will be bringing the marshmallows and we'll let you know when that's going to be and we'll have a little marshmallow roast out there.
Sounds good. I would think so.
All right. Budget summary was included in the packet and is also available online. So, this is part of the... After we approved the budget, we sent it into the state. They asked for kind of a little budget narrative that goes there. And so, we went ahead and got that done. And when we got it done, I said, "This needs to go out to the public." So, it is available online and that was included in your packet as well. There's nothing in there that we haven't really talked about. It's just kind of documenting it for everybody who might have missed those meetings.
Is that the piece of paper that said the city is in strong economics?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know who it came from. So, you're going to put some information on that correct context.
I... Yeah.
Because it's... I can't find it, but it was like I...
Okay.
I thought, "Well, isn't that nice?" But I didn't know who...
It says the last page...
Yes.
So, it's a page I autographed when we put it into the budget. We'll make sure we update it, include a page.
Just say the...
I'll just add a signature page at the end.
Yep. Because, I mean, they could have thought that, you know, you could have written or something.
I did write it.
But... Anyway, you know what I mean.
Yep. Understood. Noted. I will take that as an action item. All right. Significant land use applications approved since our last meeting. This was something else that council raised for me to do a better job on. So, on October thirtieth, the Boys and Girls Club will close Villard between Ninth and Tenth for a trick-or-treat event.
Cool.
On December fifth and sixth, there's going to be Christmas stroll on Broadway from Eighth to Fourteenth Streets. So, we... Those are shut down as they are every year. And on December twentieth, St. Agnes Church will close Word from Tenth to Eleventh, for a live nativity scene.
What day is that?
That's on December twentieth, up by the Catholic Church. That kind of in mind of what we had for events and stuff.
Make sure my dog's inside.
Okay. All right. Also, council is writing down notes. If you would please make a note for December second. December second at five thirty, so that's a Tuesday. They are scheduling a joint meeting with the Urban Renewal Agency and the Planning Board and Council. Our planner is also going to be able to attend that meeting. They're going to come down in person, weather permitting, and they'll be remote if the weather's bad. And that is Kansas State, who came in and did some visioning exercises for that urban renewal area, is going to kind of do their initial presentation of kind of what's there. That's kind of the last... That will be a public meeting. But the goal is to have a... Another public meeting, kind of we scheduled for the week of January fifth sometime, if the dates are not nailed down. But that's basically just for them to kind of give their presentation to council and planning board in a forum where you guys can ask a little bit more questions and back-and-forth dialogue in preparation for the public meeting.
And where will that be?
That will be here on Tuesday, December second at five thirty.
So, is it a city council?
It's the first Tuesday. It's not on... It's an additional Tuesday. It's the first Tuesday.
Right. Yeah. No, I understand that. But are we going to be up here as a council? Is it a special meeting?
Yes. Well, actually, urban renewal will be up here.
Okay.
And planning board and council will be down there.
Okay.
But... And it will also... And the public is also welcome to attend. So, all of the above.
Okay. Thank you.
There will be no decisions made. It will just be a presentation and hopefully some discussion and back and forth.
Is it... Now, I need to put this in my calendar.
Okay. And we're... So, we're hoping that folks are able to make it. If you're not able to make it, that's understood. It is Christmas, but they set a date and went with it and I kept it away from our regular scheduled meetings.
And that's at five thirty on the second?
Five thirty on the second.
No.
On the Tuesday.
Sorry. Not ready for that.
The other thing that had come up and this would kind of go back to our water thing, as they were replacing the iron pipes over by Lyons Park, there was a fiber cut last week and they worked through this to get that back up. They followed all the right procedures. They had all the right people come out and mark all the lines. They just marked four lines and it turned out there was five. So, you dig with the spoon until you clear all of the known equipment and then you go in with the backhoe and they found another piece of fiber. There was a specific question that had kind of come up from council, specifically of kind of, "How did that impact emergency services?" And what happened is one of the very initial calls was actually to Serena, who's our Carbon County emergency person. And what they did is they redirected all of dispatches called over to Stillwater and then dispatched them from there. So, some resiliency built into the system, which is kind of nice. On another kind of exciting note, we did receive notice about the COPS hiring grant. There was some questions this morning, but I've since cleared up all the numbers we found out. We were approved for a hundred and twenty-five thousand over a three-year period. There was a conversation about a hundred and fifty, but that's because it requires a twenty-five thousand dollar match throughout that timeframe. We will be far exceeding that. So, it is... The way they've done it, it's a little bit front-loaded. So, like the first year, it's sixty-two thousand to help go toward the additional salary and benefits for an additional officer to be a school resource. And then it diminishes there. So, what we'll do is we will need to have an MOU in place within three months of when we get the official notification. And the reason I kind of say it that after we've already heard about it is that we can't log into the system and get all the details right now by virtue of the fact that it's shut down. So, what I don't know is if that three-month counter started this week.
It's shut down because of the shutdown?
It's shut down because of the shutdown.
Okay.
So, anticipate that we'll be seeing something coming within the next ninety days and we'll be working with the school board on that. The city has come through with our part on it and now we'll be reaching out to them to have them step up and come on that as well.
And to add to that, the chief said that they would be offering it to the officers that are currently...
Yeah. All positions are offered internally first from city policy and then offered to the outside. So, that may mean that an internal officer goes and then we backfill a position.
Correct.
So, yeah. And there would be some additional training they would do.
Yeah.
But that does not mean that they're not able to... That doesn't mean they're not usable for that timeframe. It just means we want to make sure that those people are equipped to be successful in that environment.
Yes.
We had one officer that we thought would have been an ideal fit, but we didn't have this done and so we lost him to another municipality. So, that's the way it goes sometimes. And part of that discussion is that the school board will probably be involved at least in an approval and signing off on it as well. And that's just per the previous conversations we've had with the school board. Public Surplus dot com. You may recall that we did an event to sell our old Bat Truck and our Dura Patcher. The Bat Truck sold and Mike is working with Lonnie to get those funds. They've already sent off their certified check to the middleman and so we'll get that in for us. The Dura Patcher did not meet the reserve. It's a little bit easier to store during the winter and so he did not feel it was prudent to go ahead and accept the low-ball offers that came in on that one. So, we did not. The truck, they had said a reserve of sixty. We ended up getting fifty-eight and something and they accepted that. It has a problem motor and so they thought that was... We didn't want to store that through the winter. So, comments on that? The last thing I'm just going to address is a public comment. Not the most reliable communication format, but as I was at the post office, I noticed... This is the second meeting in a row that I've noticed people writing on the posted agendas at the post office. And somebody had raised a concern about the general election and is this one time? Is it too late to write people in? The answer is yes, it is too late to write people in and so we would have been sending the essence of an empty envelope out to everybody. This is a one-time thing. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to the elections office or to the front office here or to me. I'm happy to address that and I think probably most of council is able to address that as well. If we see comments like that, I'll...
Did you write the answer down?
I did not. But what I did notice is that it's not on this week's agenda. So, it is somebody who pays enough attention that they saw it on last week's agenda or maybe in the newspaper and they had written it down there.
I think it's a great form of communication.
Yeah, we should just have a message board. Like this camp.
The... I said, when I note that, I'll do my best to address that, but it's not the most reliable communication channel. So, I would encourage you to reach out.
It is the post office.
Either... And you can write it down on a piece of paper and drop it off at the front office, but we'll always do our best to address questions as they come in.
At least it's not like a bar bathroom wall. So, that's good.
I didn't check there yet.
Wow. That didn't work for you?
All right.
Why did you do that?
That is everything I had down for mayor's comments. Anything else that I failed to follow up on? All right. Thank you. All right, thank you. At this point of the agenda, we will go to our public comment and I will start off just by clarifying this is the first of, of a few. There'll be a public comment at the beginning of the meeting. There'll also be a public comment at the end of the meeting. Um, and then as we have action items during the business section of, of the agenda, uh, there will be a public comment on a per item at, at those action items. If you would start by coming to the podium, um, the, the one up here with the green light, we can all hear you and it's online for, it'll be recorded and available for folks online as well. State your name, address your comments to me. Remember, this is not a, a discussion period, so you'll make your comments. Um, at the end of public comments or at the end of the meeting, if, 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 uh, it's appropriate for council to offer response, we'll do, we'll give it, council an opportunity to respond. Um, if not, we may follow up on it. The goal is just to keep it from degrading into a, a, a back and forth discussion. Um, and I will go ahead and time folks at three minutes. Um. Let me just get this ready to go. And with that, I will go ahead and open the public comment period. Traditionally, we always start with those in the chamber, which is booked from wall to wall. I see, I see nobody moving from the chamber, so I next look to online.
No, no, he, he moved. He quenched.
Um, and next to look online and you can either turn on your camera or raise a hand or take yourself off mute. Any of those would be an indication to me to reach out to you for public comment. Going once, twice, three times. We'll go ahead and close that, but that's how that works. All right. Next we'll move to action items and I will entertain a motion for resolution number three, seven, one, nine.
I move to approve resolution number three, seven, one, nine, budget amendment, resolution amending appropriations and reserves for various funds for fiscal year twenty, twenty-five.
My second.
Motion from council member Ronnie, second from council member Con Lee. Um, as we open this up with discussion at the table, Lonnie, do you want to just give us in your out loud voice a little summary of those? For those who haven't been to the previous meetings, kind of what this is?
Here.
I can lend you mine.
I got it.
Okay.
Okay. So this is just to clean up last year's fiscal year budget. Um, the, the ones that are included in here was the CDVG fund, um, you know, to increase it by forty-three thousand, by fifty-one, fifty. Um, this was money that came in through the grants that they had got and then it went right back out to the community foundation. Um, but we just didn't account for it in the budget. Um, the investor fund, we didn't account for the funds coming in for the Rocky Fork Inn purchase through FEMA funds. Um, so that's just to increase it by that amount. Um, the, the specially restricted law enforcement fund, um, we had to increase that one. Those funds were used for, um, the K nine. We have since been reimbursed, um, for that already. So, but as far as the budget goes, we showed the negatives, we need to clean that up. Uh, solid waste fund, this one had to do with an auditor adjustment when they came in and did year end for, it's called GASP. Five, six, five, somewhere, but it's a, it's an accounting, you know, for municipalities, governmental, um, accounting. And that, that's it.
Just, just for, for a little additional comment for the public. Um, when we set out the budget, we do our very, very best to be accurate and make our very best predictions and estimations. But there are some things and I'll, I'll look at the, that one point eight million, that's an awful lot. That's a, that was a, that's a, an outside funding source coming in. So we don't end up building those additional sources of income and expenses going out until we know what those numbers are. So a lot of times we don't know what we're going to be awarded for something. Um, we don't know what they're going to offer because we had a flood. And, but, but nevertheless, the accounting has to reflect and show all of that. So at the end of the year, it's just kind of a normal cleanup process to go through and identify all of those extra sources that came in that were not accurately reflected in, uh, on the budget and, and, and just account for them.
Would the COPS grant be an example that we will have necessary?
So the COPS grant, no, actually we built that into this budget. So like I said, we do our very best to include everything that we know what is.
Even though we didn't know the amount of the grant.
Yeah. We, well, we made our best guess. So we may have had like one fifty and it might be one twenty-five.
So we based it, we did allocate on our side of the, the grant sixty-two thousand that would come in. But our match was forty thousand or whatever. That is included in the shift budget.
Yes.
It's, it's in the notes and stuff and the salary.
Couldn't remember.
I also wanted to point out too, if we don't do a budget amendment for any negative fund, we get rolled up in our audit. So.
That's the K nine one.
Um, all, any of.
Oh, oh, any of them.
All of these could have been negative. If any fund, the total, the total for each fund, if it is in the negative when we have our audit done, we will get rolled up for it. Because you cannot have any fund in.
It's an accounting goof.
Yes. So that's another reason for the budget amendments as well.
Discussion at the table. Hearing none, what we will do is we go to, uh, public comments specifically on resolution three, seven, one, nine, the budget amendment. Looking to the chamber, seeing no one leaping from their seats, looking to online, looking for hands, cameras or unmuted mics. Stalling, going once, going twice, going three times, we'll close public comments on the budget and bring it back to the table. Any further discussion before we take a vote? Hearing none, I get a roll call, please.
Con Lee?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Cupin?
Yes.
Five zero, motion passes. I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract for a utility build-out study.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute a contract for the utility build-out study.
I'll second.
Motion from council member Ronnie, second from council member Ruth. Discussion at the table and whereas our public works director is currently busy and occupied, I will go ahead and address this. Um, council did get an updated copy of the agreement. Uh, this was one of those fast track items in part because the contractor's, uh, availability is next week. And if we miss that window of availability, uh, there was a problem. Um, this has to do, is tied to what we call impact fees in the city. Um, there are some regulations on your impact fees about how frequently they need to be updated. As we started into that process, working with our engineering company, uh, the gentleman the contractor is with is who they recommended to us. Um, but it was determined that we don't need to do a full-blown impact study. What we do is what's called a build-out study again, a build-out study, which is a, is a small portion that feeds into an impact study. Um, and it's basically, they go through, um, and do the math to justify what we are charging for hookups. And so what I anticipate is in the future, we will have a recommendation that we change an impact fee to a hookup fee. But there will be an explanation about why this is the right amount for a hookup fee. Um, there was a question in, in the standing committee, is there an assumption that those automatically go up to the end of everything else? And the answer is absolutely not. So it's just a matter of, of assuming that it's just a matter of making sure that, uh, those fees are justified and stand up in court and, and the math is behind them to say, here's what it costs. Basically to address enhanced capabilities in our infrastructure systems by increasing the service.
Right.
Comments?
Yeah, um, sorry, the way that was worded, is there the possibility that these will go down from the study?
There, there's a possibility it can go down too. And I don't, I, there's no expectation about whether they're going up, down or sideways. All it's going to be is tell us what the number is and why, and it will come back to council for approval. So for instance, if they come back and it's way too high, they may say, ooh, we're going to take a loss or how do we do that? Cause we don't want to cycle development.
Right. The other thing that I wonder with that, do they take into account our current reserves from impact fees?
They do. They will do that, although I will, I will point out that those reserves are going to be significantly down because that's how we're paying for this sixteen-inch bypass project as well. So that was, again, money we've been collecting, but we hadn't actually.
Done the work.
Done the work.
Yep.
Other comments at the table?
Who wrote this contract?
So the, there was initially a letter, which is included in the email that was sent out by the contractor. There was a draft that our city attorney, we, I had asked the city attorney to build a draft. Um, and he basically melded kind of a standard contract template with that letter. Um, and during the, the council feedback and the standing committee meeting, so there was some questions raised. And so what I did is I had the contractor and the attorney get on the line and address the, the, the concerns that had been raised by council. They were specifically tied to number eight, the required insurance and how that read. Um, and, and so those two got on the line and made sure it was applicable to both parties. Um, and then, uh, the city attorney came to the, to the standing committee meeting today. Um, and I asked council if, the, the council members that were there, if we needed to keep him for the evening meeting and their field was know that it was covered well enough. So if you have questions, ask them.
There was just some really weird wording in here. Just.
In the latest copy or in the earlier version?
In both. Like, like the last sentence in eight required insurance. Um, da-da-da-da-da, any insurance, da-da-da-da, its officers or volunteers shall be in excess of contractor's insurance and shall not contribute with it. What do you mean with it? Contribute with it?
Okay.
Uh, it's just, there's just some really odd, um, terminology, even under scope of work.
Do you, do you have an amendment you want to propose to it?
No, that's why I wanted to know who wrote it. It, it doesn't really matter, but it doesn't make any sense. But it doesn't have any bearing on, on.
Yeah. So this was written by our city attorney.
Oh.
In con, in conjunction, in conjunction with the contractor just signing off on it before it came to council.
And we've used this contractor in the past?
Twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, it's been many years since we've done it.
Cause he's in Vermont.
But, but there are several other, there are several other cities in the area. I think he actually lives in Wyoming.
At first class air, airfare and looks like he's from Vermont.
Yeah, I thi, I think he's there now part of the time. He's actually doing a couple of different cities and we're splitting the expenses with them. So he's basically, it's actual expenses and he said, but I am old and I do travel first class, what I do. And there's like one or two trips, I think, is always got planned for that.
Okay.
And it's ultimately way, way cheaper than an impact study and we couldn't find anybody else to do it. And so we said, yes, let's do it.
The other question is while he's doing this impact study.
His, his build-up study.
His build-up. Well, when I, I read build-out, I was thinking, well, maybe, um, he's going to have some opinion on annexate, annexing some of the properties that aren't in the city limits that are currently getting city ser, portions of city service.
That actually was part of our initial call. We kind of talked about that a little bit. I don't know if that, that'll fit into this conversation, but I'm sure he will offer his input. Right now, the planning team is working on that and putting together a staff report for us for recommendations.
But he's not going to specifically be working on that?
That's not specifically, but there may be crossover between those two. I, I will add, just so I don't forget, um, we did get a chance to verify, you will recall, we had those annexation questions. And we're wondering if there was an impact that we have to do it before the end of the year to do it. Um, we did find out that there is, that does not impact us that way. So the, the, where they assigned it a property value of ninety percent, seventy percent, a hundred and twenty percent. That gets done no matter which jurisdiction it's in. As if it transfers one jurisdiction to another, it holds that value as it goes by. So that was, that was not a valid deadline and we can take the time to, to get that study back from the planner and then, and then move forward or not accordingly. So.
That was my question.
That was a little bit of a tangent. I apologize, but I just forget things. Council member Davis.
When was the last time you said that? We've had one of these done and how often do we have to have them?
We're supposed to do it every five years and it's been longer than that.
Okay. So, okay. Thank you. Glad for doing it.
There were, one of the, one of the things that happened is when we got into it, um, it turns out if you do an impact study and you call it an impact study and you call it an impact fee, there's a bunch of associated rules that go along with that that you have to adhere to. Turns out most of the smaller municipalities in our region, Montana, Wyoming and around, don't actually do impact studies. They do the build-out fees, which is a subset of it. And there's a little bit more, little less stringent requirements as far as, I think you still have to update it every five years and stuff. Um, but like with impact fees, you have to list out the specific projects. And then, and so, and with, with the build-out study, it's a little, that was one of the, one of the reasons that the recommendation was to do this instead. If we do decide to go with an impact study, this actually leads into the impact study. But I don't anticipate we'll do that, but we'll see what the, what the results are when it comes back.
Please clarify for, I don't know, compared with any other community?
Oh, will, will the payment of this come from our impact?
It's, it's act, no, it's going to come, it's going to be, no, it's going to be coming from water and sewer. So the, the, the fees that are included in that will be basically spread across those, those, those enterprise funds specifically.
Thank you.
Well, I, I too was concerned about first-class travel from Vermont. I looked it up, it's a thousand dollars. So I'm concerned about how many times, I, I realize he may be sharing his traveling with other cities, but I would just say who's ever on, add man who signs the warrants to keep track of that. I don't know what else you can do.
Well, it does say it won't exceed.
No, it, it, he's getting ninety-five hundred dollars, but there's also travel, lodging and expenses.
But that's all included in ninety-five hundred?
No.
No, that's, his, his, his fee tops out at ten.
So I would just keep track of that stuff.
Yeah, we'll, we'll track that and say, hey, you're, it's getting out of line.
Cause, um, Vermont to here is a thousand buck, dollars a pop.
Okay.
And if he's, if he's true to his word, he's sharing that expense with other cities.
And hopefully he's booking a little bit in the head and then planning it accordingly as well. So.
Well, yeah, first class, what can I say? Can't get deals on first class.
I bet your partner will say that.
Anyway.
Thank you.
I would just say, look at the warrants.
Watch it. And, and you guys will be, you guys will be signing those too, so we can, we can raise that as a question. But we will note it and we will keep an eye on that.
Cause, yeah, it does.
And have, and have counseling conversations as necessary.
It, it does say under number six compensation, that the total amount paid will be limited to ninety-five hundred.
Total amount.
The, the total amount. So it's not ninety-five hundred plus all the other stuff.
That's how I read it as well.
Yeah. Number six under the, the letter that Mike Maple sent him.
Well, I would watch.
That's what they're signing and agreeing and we'll still watch it.
Yeah, I would watch it. And he has to sign that. So that's, uh.
Yeah.
Yep.
Other discussion at the table? All right, hearing none, what we will do is we will go to, um, public comments directly associated with the utility build-out study. Looking to the room, looking to online, looking for mics, cameras, action, hands raised. Going once, twice, three times. We've checked that box. We'll go ahead and move on with the agenda. Back to the table. Any further discussion before we? Okay. Hearing none, can I get a roll call, please?
Con Lee?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Cupin?
Yes.
Five oh, motion passes. All right. Um, that completes the action portion of our agenda. The next portion of what we do with our agenda is kind of address things that are in the channel and working our way forward. Um, this is, the intent here is for council to discuss amongst themselves what they've been doing on their individual standing board committee meetings. And also just kind of give the public an additional opportunity, uh, to see what's coming up. Um, and then give a chance to, to reach out and offer their feedback to council as we move forward. So with that, we're going to start with, uh, public health and safety. And for that, I will look to, uh, committee chair Con Lee to, to give us an update.
Yes, um, Steve Schrock, of course, gave us the news on the SRO grant being approved with, uh, big kudos to Danae for putting that all together and getting it through. So we're happy to hear that. Uh, there were three hundred and eleven calls for service. I didn't see anything, it's in your pocket, that was weird or different. We did discuss the, um, tobacco use in city-owned parks and recreation facilities. And it's a, an old ordinance, eight eighty-four. And we did discuss that we're going to probably need to make some changes to it because it called out which parks that the tobacco use was not allowed in, as opposed to just calling it city-designated parks. So we're going to, we're going to take a look at that, as well as the resolution for fines, which started at forty dollars, which is about a pack of cigarettes.
Yeah.
So, uh, we're going to be working on those two things.
So, so from a council standpoint, um, the ideas that they were talking about to get the rest of council an opportunity to weigh in is rather than listing just one or two specific parks, and it was like the skate park or things specifically associated with kids. Council's feeling, uh, that let me describe it, the standing committee's feeling was make it just include city parks in general unless they were specifically designated otherwise. And part of that logic was as new parks are spun up and online, they would automatically be included as tobacco-free rather than having to come in and amend, amended every time. What's the rest, what's council's pulse on that or feel?
I have no issue with that, but you said unless otherwise.
So for instance, if there was some park, we were going to allow it. I'm not saying there is, but, but if you excluded it and said, everybody's included here unless it's excluded, that, that was, that was just kind of how you dealt. Rather than saying it's X, Y and Z, say it's all of them unless for some reason we've excluded it.
I, I, I would say to use the clean air act type verbiage because it's not all tobacco anymore. There's vaping, there's, yeah.
Yeah.
So you can't just put up tobacco-free because if you vape, you're, you're not using tobacco.
Well, apparently there's a, a new state rule about indoor vaping.
So they, yeah, they changed the, in, the, this, and, and, and the county health person was going to come talk to us.
Right.
Um, so hopefully she'll come in the next, so, so the, the, the language that, as, as we read from her notes, it sounded like the, the legislation changes may have just applied to indoor, but council may wish to apply those same rules to the outdoor parks too. For the same reason. That's, that's certainly within your prerogative to do so.
For a different reason, really.
It, is it worth, cause to me, it's not just the smell and the air quality, it's also the littering. Um, and specifically I think of chew pouches, thin pouches, those types of things. Can't tell you how many times I had to try and pull one of those out of my puppy's mouth when he was a kid, like just, and that's scary. Like, uh, that could kill a dog. So, um, I don't know if it's me, worth mentioning just smoking or nicotine products.
Tobacco use.
Yeah. And that's the thing is we have tobacco use, but when we change that, if we're using just clean air, also considerations for littering.
We'll, we'll pull that and take a look at that too.
Well, and, and not just even littering, but you're talking about specific projects too, because we have littering ordinances.
Yeah, we have littering ordinances, but I think that language, including something along the lines of pouches, uh, that would be nice to have included.
Anything else that council would like to relay on to that committee for input? Do you feel good about that guidance and have you gotten a note there?
Yep, good.
All right, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right, any questions for public health and safety?
I just want to comment, uh, Chief Schrock said, um, that they have that new reporting program. So it saves several hours of his manual labor. The system, uh, it's.
Yeah, so rather, rather than manually creating his calls for service report, they found a button you can press and it just spits it out. The format is slightly different from what we've seen before, but the level of effort into it is also nothing. So theoretically what we saw this week will be the format and just changes, it is, it's a new standard. So.
Yeah, it saves money.
All right. Next we'll go to admin and finance and for that I will look to, uh, committee chair Ronnie for an update.
Yes. So, um, on your agenda, there is a resolution to support petition for annexation into the rural fire district. Um, this is the first step in sending out the petition is that we as council have to, um, pass this resolution to support, um, sending out the petition. And if we, um, the petition passes, that we would support the city of Red Lodge being annexed into Red Lodge rural fire. Um, this is just the start of it. Um, we found several items in this resolution that we. that we are, basically, we're probably going to rewrite a lot of it. So, do you have some comments on, on that? I know you've had, made good notes this morning.
The, the, the goal last time when we had our conversation is let's, this is a conversation that's occurred multiple times throughout the year without moving the ball. And so what we did is we started out with a, a draft resolution. Uh, it's very hard to find composers. It turns out, it's really easy to find editors. So by throwing something out there, we had all sorts of editors show up, and we have three pages of notes, and we'll come back with an updated draft in a few days.
Yeah, so, and if, if you're not aware, um, right now, we are paying, um, are contracting with Red Lodge Rural Fire twenty-eight mils a year for our fire protection. Um, and considering that we only are allotted so many mils, and if the value of the mil goes up, then our number of mils that the city can, um, use from the county goes down, but we're still paying twenty-eight mils to the fire department. So, it's not a sustainable way of paying for our fire. Um, this petition, this whole, um, Montana code was actually, a lot of it was drafted at the behest of our Red Lodge Rural Fire Department, so that they could annex in Bear Creek. Um, because obviously, you know, Bear Creek, as small as it is, could not afford to contract, you know, pay a contract for it, or have their own fire department. Um, so what this would do is forty percent of the property owners that hold forty percent of the value of the property in the city of Red Lodge would have to sign this petition. And then it would, we would be annexed in after a couple more steps there, including the county, I believe, um, approving the annexation. Um, this would lower our costs that we are paying to the fire department. Um, right now, we're at twenty-eight mils, and this would lower the mils down to like twenty-one mils to the fire department.
Can I, can I tweak that for clarification?
Yes.
Um, so right now, we pay those twenty-eight mils out of the general mils we collect at the city. And, and it's been indicated that, those number of mils vary from year to year, depending on how much. Basically, it's, 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 it's part of the math about do property values go up and down, but we still only get half the average rate of inflation over the last three years. And so they say to get that, you get this many mils to, to get there. Um, if we do this move, this will be a complete elimination of fire expenses from our city budget.
General fund.
General fund, and, well, and, and city budget, because they would then go to the taxpayers directly. So, it will be, and in, it will be a tax increase to the taxpayers. They wanted to point out, and this is, I think, where, where council member Ronnie is going, this, as it sits right now, is actually will be a tax cut to the fire district. But part of that reason, comma, and part of the reason I'm in such a favor of having this conversation, is right now, city residents are paying a disproportionately higher amount for fire services than the rest of the fire district. We are currently paying twenty-eight, and the rest of the fire district is paying something in the average of like twenty-one to twenty-two. So, if the city suddenly starts paying twenty-one to twenty-two, that means they're getting a cut in their budget. So, there's some additional conversations to have there. Did I, did I get where you're going with that?
Yep, you did. Um, although, um, you know, there, there could be conversations down the road to use some of our resort tax to backfill that budget cut to the fire department. Um, as every other city in Montana that collects resort tax uses some of their resort tax funding to cover fire expenses. So, there's a couple of things at play here. But basically, what it boils down to is we have a list of things that we have to do. Number one is rewrite the resolution. Um, number two is we have to write up a letter, um, with talking points in it that will go out with it, so people know what's going on. It will involve, um, a PR campaign, so to speak, which is just getting that information out there. You know, what, um, what will it do to people's property taxes? How much will the property taxes go up? Um, and the most important thing is how will the city utilize, use that money, the two, the two hundred and sixty-three thousand to three hundred thousand dollars extra that's now in our general fund? Um, how will we be using that money? And that we're not just creating a flush fund in our general fund to just go have fun with? You know, that it will be used for our public health and safety, that it will be used, you know, exactly how are we going to use that, and why do we need it? And if this doesn't go through, what are our other options? You know, is to cut staff, to cut, um, our twenty-four-seven police services that we have right now? You know, why do we need that? You know, and as the mayor has said over and over, one and a half percent increase in your general fund is not sustainable for, for the expenses of our city. It doesn't keep up with inflation, and our general fund has been hurting for a long time, so.
We've, we've lost twenty-two percent of our purchasing power in the last twenty years, just because we have, the tax rate has not gone up at the same rate of inflation. And yet, all of our contracts and all of our salaries and stuff do, not to mention supplies. I hear that boots can be upwards of two hundred dollars plus for a good pair of boots, so.
But yes, so.
So, so, like I said, there was about three pages of notes taken today, but at the same time, as you guys threw that, if you have any suggestions or comments, um, A, you can share them now, but also, please feel free to reach out to any of the members on that committee and, and share your thoughts, so they can incorporate it into their standing committee meetings. And any thoughts or comments on that right now that you can relay on to, that you wanna relay on to them?
Don't look at me.
You're on the committee.
Yeah.
It was covered.
On this particular resolution.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
I think that the chief said that this would probably result in an eighty thousand dollar cut to the fire department, which he was willing to take because he felt this was a better way to do it.
Well, uh, let me expand on that. What, what you say is, we, we will have to address that. There, there, like I said, there are several benefits, benefits of this. One of them, one of them that I like is that it gets the city out of being the middleman, um, for, for services, right? Right now, if they need more money, they come to the city and we go, eh, 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 you know, and we have to go to the voters. Cause there's an alternative, we can approach this with a public safety mail to help address police and fire both, which right now is where virtually a hundred percent of our, our general fund tax mills go to. Everything else is enterprise and, and fee for services. So, right now, the tax money we collect pays for police, and it pays for fire. And the cost for providing those has gone up, so we either need to bring more money in or we need to cut the services. And right now, we're in, locked into a contract here, that cutting those services, um, right now, that would have to come from our police department to be able to address that need, that, that falling. I, I understand and agree that to provide that fire service, they may need more money, but I want them to go to the voters, I want them to spend it, just like on the ambulance district. They went to the voters and said, here's why we need more, here's what it's gonna be, and here's what you're gonna get. And here's what happens if we don't get that. I want them to have that conversation directly with the taxpayers, rather than sticking us as the, as the voiceless middleman in the middle.
And Tom did estimate that he thinks that the cost to the taxpayer would be about the same as what you see on your tax bill for ambulance district. That's his guesstimate at this point.
For that. So, and like I said, that eighty thousand dollar cut is the diff, that eighty thousand drop is the equivalent, is basically, we're paying a disproportionately higher percentage of cost. So, that's the other thing that fixes if we make this part of the district.
Right, and that's why he would go to the resort tax committee and see if he could make that up.
Hearing no other input from the table. And for the public, I'll just say, if you have comments or thoughts, you are welcome to reach out to your council representatives and give that feedback in for the public discussion as well.
Our admin and finance is the second and fourth Tuesday at nine fifteen AM. You're welcome to zoom in or attend in person.
I, I do have a question, can't go, move on yet. Uh, first paragraph, I'm already confused. Uh, someone helped me with simplifying owners of forty percent of the, more of the real property, and then owners of property representing forty percent.
So, so, this is the Montana code, and one of the steps that was added today is the first thing we need to do is go to the Department of Revenue. So, this is not voters who vote on this, this is property owners.
Okay.
So, what you do is, when you get a list of signatures, those signatures have to represent at least forty percent of the individual properties, and also forty percent of the value. So, if one person owns a hundred properties worth a million dollars, and they say yes, you fill, yeah, both lines have to get above forty percent, so the property value line goes up, but you haven't met the forty percent of the individual property owner's line. Both of those thresholds have to be passed before it goes through.
Got it. So, you can't, you can't go pick someone with a ton of property.
Yeah.
Got it.
Right, and, 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 well, so, so to be fair, if you're going for, when you talk about prioritizing and reaching out to these folks, if we go knocking door to door and say, hey, we want you to sign this petition. Um, I'm gonna prioritize that those start with the higher, cause you're, you're checking two boxes with one, with one contact. But you've, you've still gotta have forty percent, even, so let's suppose ten people own forty percent of the property value, you're not done. You still need forty percent of the actual property owners to also sign off on it.
Okay, but you're gonna have to explain that to people.
Oh, yeah. Probably.
There's gotta be a.
There's gonna be a lot of explaining.
I would do it with a chart or some graphics, because otherwise, um, just.
Yeah, that was, that was part of the discussion that was, that happened today, so.
Okay, good.
Take it and appreciate it, thank you.
Sort of like a three-minute breakdown of how this all works.
Right, okay, that's fine, I'm good.
Um, rest of your agenda?
Yes, sorry, um, so then, on our, um, and the other thing we talked about was to authorize the Red Lodge area community foundation to prepare the Montana Main Street Grant. Um, this is a grant, I believe, that is available every year, is that correct? Uh, and, um, the community foundation has been right at applying for this grant and getting a lot of smaller projects done at the community foundation. I think it's up to, is it up to thirty thousand, ten, ten to thirty?
They said that, um, the entire state, any Main Street community can apply, and they have two hundred and fifty thousand this grant cycle, but the largest one they're not in this one.
Uh, so much thirty thousand?
Thirty.
Okay, so, um, the Main Street program, um, we were one of the flagship, um, communities with the state back in, I think, two thousand and five or six. We were the first one, um, that became a Main Street and joined the Main Street program. And the purpose of it is to, uh, revitalize downtown Main Streets. And so the grant, I believe, has to be used for, um, that purpose to, um, for tourism and economic commerce, infrastructure downtown, or, or on Main Street. And the community foundation and the chamber and the city have partnered, although a lot of the reporting work has fallen on Bill Foysey and Kat, which we absolutely appreciate. Um, so the city has never applied for this, and we had a great conversation today about how we need to, um, start having shovel-ready projects to apply for these type of grants when they come up. Um, and with that, um, the deadline for this one is November fourteenth, is that correct? So, we had a, a conversation today on whether or not the city would want to apply for this. And yes, we'd love to, but, um, we did have some conversations that we, we really don't have a shovel-ready project unless the mayor made one so today.
And, and, and just to clarify, the city has taken advantage of some of these dollars cause that, that helped pay for the, 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 um, growth policy and the downtown master plan.
But there's two different streams, some pools of money. So, you can apply for the planning grant, and you can apply, you, though, correct?
You have to wait, you have to wait until that one's complete, like, it'll be one project.
Yeah.
One project at a time, okay, um, so anyway.
Yeah, so there was a conversation that the city in the future needs to take a more proactive plan to make sure that identified projects like we have that maybe do that, and, and, and it's mostly dead, maybe not completely dead, but like, for instance, could that help pay for some of the, the pride park rehab that we're doing? But in the absence of the city not being ready going into this, we'd rather see that money still come into Red Lodge than go elsewhere. And so, that's, that's where the foundation stepped in and said, if you guys aren't going for it, can we help make sure we get, Red Lodge gets some of that money? And so that's what would be coming, when they do that, we actually apply as a city, but they do all of the, the, the grant preparation. But there's a commitment that's involved with that, cause there's a lot of, of additional dollars. And, and in the past, I don't think we've had, we haven't had city, I don't think we've obligated city funds to do it, but, but we're the only eligible recipient, so we act as a pass-through when they do that. And so that would be coming to council, um, presumably in a couple of weeks, and they would have a finished grant at that point, that we would be looking at and say, yes, we can submit it.
You might have paid for some of the weight, right, signage of the mash, but I don't.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, one thing we did mention is that if the city is going to start applying for these, that it would be nice, um, to actually have city representation on their steering committee to help with the quarterly reports, um, possibly setting up quarterly meetings, um, where we're actually working on those, um, reports and helping with that. I do get the emails, the mayor gets the email, I just didn't realize that when I was getting those, I was on the steering committee, so, I apologize. All of a sudden, I just started getting these emails, so, um, I would, you know, I, I think, um, I know. Um, so, I, I feel bad because I know Bill and Kat put a ton of work into these quarterly reports, and, um, they've done great things with the money. I do think that it'd be great if the steering committee could come up with a way to share those funds with, you know, between other entities, whether it's city, a city project, chamber project, or, you know, a, a community foundation project, so, for the future, so.
So, I guess, guy, guess my question as far as, as we look toward the next agenda? Um, the fire district is still in the working stage, I do not, it's still gonna be below the fold as we refer to it up at the table. Um, it's gonna be on the bottom half of the agenda still in two weeks. But is council comfortable with moving, um, the, the Main Street Grant?
Yes.
And approving that to, for action next, next week?
Yes.
For the?
For action.
For action? Who's gonna do it?
They are.
They are, yeah. For this one.
And so, we're, 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 we're gonna, my, my, my proposal is that we move that to the action portion of the menu, and then they will get us that information in time for us to take action on it.
I was gonna say, yeah, because has the council discussed what that grant is going to fund?
We, it's in the, um, the letter from.
It's, it's actually not in the letter, but we did get it at the standing committee today.
Oh, is that what, well?
Yeah, so the letter had talked about past examples. Um, they, they specifically, we're gonna use this for converting some surplus parking on, on the backside of the building into some green space that could be used for events rather than, than parking. Did I summarize that?
Yeah, it, it is, I was gonna say, it's in there.
That's what I thought, I was like, before I rested.
Okay.
Yeah, he's there.
I can't correct it.
Yeah, okay, I was like, there.
Oh, no. Council member Davis?
I just say, um, the city liaison or whatever, would that be from city council on that committee? Or it wouldn't be a city employee like Danae or anybody, what's great?
Right now, the Main Street program is a very loose conglomerate of volunteers. What we're trying to do is tighten that up, and so, that's another thing that council member Toopin is working on in her committee, is kind of how do we, how do we formalize that? And the city, the city has to, well, she's, she's the committee chair.
No, I'm not.
No, she's not.
It's Jody.
She's one we keep volunteering to me.
I know. You can insert me on that, but I'll be there as well.
Did it know?
I'm, I'm, what am I mean today?
Um, but yes, um, we, we will, um, we will definitely be, um, looking at that. Um, mainly because, you know, it's, it's really not fair that, that Bill and Kat do all of this work. Bill does, they both do an amazing amount for our community and.
But I will say it works, cause, uh, Main Street America for all, every single one of the, um, states in the US is gonna be here in Red Lodge.
Yeah.
For a conference, on the twentieth of October.
So, Main, yeah, Main Street for the, for the states is here. All right, so, if you will make sure to get that to us, if you will make sure to get that to us by a week from Wednesday, so that we have time to see if there's any glaring things, and, and then it'll go in the packet. We put those packets together on Thursday and send them out Friday morning.
Yeah.
Okay. And it will be, we will have it for action at the next meeting. And yes, you will wanna be here for that case there's any questions to come up.
And if you could reach out to our committee on what you would like that to look like, how it would work as far as quarterly meetings, and actually having people get together and, and help with those instead of just being through an email chain type of thing? What, if you and Bill would let us know how we can help?
By next Thursday?
No, no, not by next Thursday.
No, no, no.
Just the following Tuesday meetings, our admin and finance.
The, the, these are two separate things. One of them is the, the putting boundaries on the, on the Main Street program in the future, and at number four, set us up for success in the future.
So, for some reason, Bill decides he really does wanna retire instead of, you know, doing all this work? And that was, that was about our whole meeting, right there, except for what we're doing in the future, and that's fine.
Anything you need input from, on council that we already, we already talked about the fire? Anything else? Any other questions for admin and finance? All right, thank you. Um, with that, we will go to land use and planning, and this is committee chair Tupin.
Correct. That is me. So in land use and planning, we did discuss a very small portion of the Main Street program, just specifically the importance of having it.
So you're saying, you're saying the mayor's not completely crazy. There was an overlap there.
There was an overlap. Very, very brief overlap. Uh, but more specifically, and one thing that we do want councils, uh, feedback on, as well as the public, uh, we did get an MOU, um, and essentially a request from the Red Lodge Tennis Board. And they have been working tirelessly, I will say, uh, for the past couple of years since I've started on council, and when they first reached out saying our tennis courts need work, um, we need help, we gave them direction, like, okay, get yourself a group and start fundraising funds, and you do the majority of the work, and boy, howdy, have they. So a, a lot of kudos goes to the tennis board and the parks board across, across the board. But one thing that they did, are looking to do is, um, look for a grant for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and that would be to build tennis courts up by the high school and near Coal Miners Park. Uh, part of the conversation with this is there's been other user groups that have said we, or individuals, I should say, not necessarily user groups, don't wanna tie that down, uh, that that isn't the best and highest use. That there's a lot of folks that think it is the best and highest use. Uh, one thing that we are working on in land use and planning is how to identify best and highest use. Unfortunately, we don't have that right now. Uh, work in progress, and it's a big, lengthy work in progress. So kind of where my thought is, is we have this MOU, and it's strictly a development and design MOU. Doesn't go into the management. It doesn't go into, uh, you know, what the city's obligations are, what their obligations are, who's gonna be, uh, managing it, insurance, all of those pieces. It doesn't handle that. But essentially, by creating this MOU, it does provide permission for them to apply for this grant, uh, for development. They need this in place, basically saying that the city will support their project. Uh, but that does say that we might down the road change our mind. So essentially, again, big wraparound way of, I personally think that we can have this up for action at our next meeting, and we have already had the conversation with the folks saying that this might not be a for certain thing, but in the, in light of what you have done and the work that has been done and the support that we have seen, we have asked them for a few other pieces of support, specifically from our city staff with Mike Maples, as well as Roger, who is here, who I imagine will be giving support on this at some point. And then, once we have that, we'd be happy to make the vote to move forward on this. And there will obviously be many steps that come after, and many requirements that we have for this board. But they have done a wonderful job in terms of fundraising, and I think personally, this would be a great use of that space. Um, and just in terms of the items that we have discussed in our meetings of best and highest use for permanent structures, this does fit in terms of helping with a user group. It fits the space that is there. It supports the school. There's many benefits to having this, so. Did I cover it, or did I cover too much?
No, no, you're fine. I, I will add just a little bit, people, like, one of the inputs that, that, cause like I said, we've got two weeks to work on and edit this. One of the specific requirements is, is like, description of the proposed development. Maybe break out a little bit of what that detail means, like, to include how to deal with the drain salt. That was one of the questions that council came up. And I think as we talked about it, it was, it was understood that that's what this purpose of this design phase is for.
Yeah.
Um, but maybe just kind of a little bit more detail about what we're doing was just one of the questions that came up from council. And so we have notes, and, and you can continue to work with the, the, the members of that standing committee meeting to put those changes in. Again, kind of the same thing. We wanna get those changes in by a week from Wednesday, so that they have time to have human elements that get corrected.
Yes, Andy.
Normally, we've been passing a resolution to, uh, back a group to go ahead and, and, and file for a, a grant. Why an MOU? Why use that instead of the resolution?
So, so normally, as a loose term, this is actually a copy of what we did with the soccer field. So they actually had a series of MOUs. That was a large-scale project that when we looked around, that was the one that was most comparable to this, where there was a, let's, how are we gonna do it, and then put an MOU to say, go out and build it, come back to us. Then we approve it, and then we come up with an operating. So this is, there's, the, the problem is, the beautiful thing about standards, at least in this city, is there's so many to choose from. And so until, until we get there, what we try to do is say, which one have we, which way have we done it in the past that makes the most sense here? And so this is what the recommendation from Parks Board and, and Land Use and Planning is, is let's copy what they did at the soccer field.
Because the grant's gonna go to the city, correct?
Um, yeah.
So if the grant goes to the city, then there has to be something to the, the people that are, are approving the grant that the city's willing to, to do that.
I do think it actually makes sense to have a resolution in place along with this. That is.
Do you see where I'm going with that?
Again, cause that is one thing, again, we have no consistency at this point, but we have consistently over the past year, I have seen multiple resolutions to.
Support.
To support or say, yes, go ahead.
Yeah.
The council supports the decision to move forward, and that is something that Dave has pushed substantially, so.
I, I just, I just wanna consistent, predictable, scalable, repeatable processes there.
And the first thing, we don't have it yet.
So they have, they did an MOU approach because that was what we asked them to.
Yep.
So my question is from council is, are we talking a resolution in addition to this, that we get prepared and ready in two weeks? Or are we saying convert this format to a resolution instead of an MOU?
I think that's.
Because I think the major objective is let's create a paper trail that lets them know that they have our support and we're backing.
I think you could just do a resolution to find the MOU to proceed forward.
So add, add a resolution?
Which may include, um, grant application.
I think it gives us both options, extra work, which is always great, and then.
So the resolution is just a one pager saying that the city is backing this move?
Correct. And that makes it really easy for searchability. Um, it also means that it will live in perpetuity within our documents and the resolutions that the city has passed over the time. Then also, it provides an MOU of understanding of what people need to be doing in that process. Yep. So it, I think it, it makes it more trackable, um, when people are looking for, like, well, who approved that? Where do you usually go for that, a resolution? And I think that makes sense.
So, so then, I would, from what I'm hearing, what we would actually do is, for the action item, there would just be a resolution, but the resolution would authorize the mayor to sign the MOU.
Correct.
As a stamp, and so this would also be included in the packet.
Correct, correct.
As, as, in, in conjunction with the resolution, but if it's a single action item.
Yep.
Uh, uh, here's a resolution saying we authorize the mayor to go ahead and sign that MOU.
Big go. I like it.
That's where I was going. I like it.
No, cause, cause Pride Park wasn't changing a, a, a land use.
Okay.
So, so the last one that we had that came up through this, which has triggered a lot of conversation, was the observatory up in Van Dyke Park.
Okay.
So that's why we're trying to say, before we do this, let's make sure we're doing a consistent process that allows public vetting, public input.
And that is one thing I will say, is moving forward, again, a lot of the pieces that we have had in place, or that have been talking about, that we don't have in place, is what kind of criteria are we looking for for this process to start versus where we're sloppily putting it together. And there's two pieces I wanna say to this. One specifically is, we may fail at some point, and that's okay. It's a learning process. We're figuring it out, but also we are learning what criteria is important to us, because one of the first things both Patty and I asked was, who's gonna be managing it? What's the insurance? Who's gonna be taking the bookings? Like, who's in charge? And that's a further down the road thing, but maybe that becomes a first thing. And we don't know that right now, but we also wanna respect timelines to make sure that this stuff is happening. Uh, more so, I would really like to see feedback from the community, because I don't want them to do a bunch of work just to come back and pull the rug. And frankly, though I may think that this is a good idea, and that tennis courts would be a lovely addition there, I've also heard other folks saying that they want different things there, and I think it's worth hearing all sides. So hopefully, at our next meeting, next council meeting, or next land use and planning meeting, preferably both, we'll get some feedback.
Yeah. So I heard, so move this forward with a resolution.
Yes.
For action next time.
Correct.
And then I will look to, um, those on the land use and, and, which is councilmember Tupin, councilmember Davis, and councilmember Daniels. And I anticipate that we'll also have to work with, um, city attorney to make sure that you've got a resolution. And again, there's some template resolutions we can pull from to work with.
Perfect.
Councilmember, uh, Rude.
Rude. Uh, just a question about the process. Um, we don't have a diagram of what this is gonna look like. How, how can we push this along when we don't have details about how it's gonna look? How they're gonna infill?
I, I think.
This is something that's pertinent.
I think the resolution is, go get that information, but this is information we need before, before this project is done. So if there are specific things we wanna spell out in there, we can spell that out.
So I think a lot of.
But, but I don't think the answer is, you have to give us all the answers before you start. Before you start looking into the answers.
Yeah.
Because the MOU.
Don't go there and do all the work before.
I understand that, you know, but I just.
No, no shovel's gonna hit the ground yet.
I know that. I just.
Well, but one shovel, but that we already talked about.
So the MOU is for them to go out and get the design of the tennis court, so that they can give us those pictures, those pretty pictures.
Yeah, because that's what the grant is for.
And in order to do that, they need a grant, so the grant comes through the city.
I, I understand the grant. I just, you know, I just wanna picture this, and I, right now, I don't have a picture of how it's gonna happen.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's no big deal.
I think I have a brochure.
And, and I think we've seen some of that, and they can include that as part of the grant, because there is some pictures in that grant application as well. So I think some of that detail.
Barb's coming.
Yeah, if you wanna hand those out, and then we'll.
And can we include that?
This is at the, this is at the council, at the table right now, so.
Yep, so, yeah, very rough, but it is essentially in place, and then combine that with this map here. So, look at all the work they've already done. Yeah, no, and that's one thing, again, I'll give them oodles and oodles of credit for, is when they first came to the city saying, hey, our tennis courts are in disrepair. We need to fix these. What the city and the Parks Board did was turn right back around, it's like, okay, you go do it. Put together a board, do the fundraising, do what you need to do to get them to where it needs to be. And we told them to resemble very similar to, to how the ci- city pool was managed, and how that fundraising went. And I'll tell ya, in what, two years?
I, I, I don't even think it's, it's not even two years. It's, it's, it's been a year.
Mm-hmm.
But, but we've, I, then, and they're over the halfway point as figuring out where seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They're over the halfway point to do that.
We've been bound, so.
In fact, I think they're over the five hundred mark, if you include what, what, uh, is talked about being budgeted for, for, from the resort tax in, in future years.
We'll put it this way, if criteria was the, or if the sole criteria was initiative and positive energy put into a project, they would, they would absolutely win.
But, but, but I, I do think, I do think that the, the primary thing, well, let's, let me back up. There are, there are two groups of folks that we've heard from that are pushed back. One of them is the frisbee golf folks, although we've al- I've also been part of a lot of conversations where they end support and working with that. But that doesn't mean we're done having the conversation about how the groups work together.
Yep.
And the second is those that just wanna put nothing there. They wanna leave that as, as, as the fields and, and trees that are there. Um, and so both of those, and like I said, we run most of that stuff through Parks Board first. And so one of the things that'll happen is I expect Parks Board, um, and I, my understanding is they're doing letters of support for the, the group as well, and so, and I would have, have them probably do that presentation for the full and, and address both of those, be, be prepared to address both of those things. Um, and then, and then, again, for me, when I go back to what are the objectives, where a service organization gets stuff done consistently, reliable and scalable, but also set up for future, having this process that we can do going forward gets us there. It, it kinda makes it, here's how we're gonna do it going forward.
And we're not rushing that process for one project. We're also not gonna put one project on hold for that process.
The, the, the problem is, we've got three or four projects.
Yeah.
Coming up while we're still building the boat.
Yeah.
So we're, we're floating and building. But, but I said, to feed that, and like I said, specific questions, great, because that gives them.
Yeah, no, it really helps us.
Be here for.
And it helps, again, it helps us with building that process for what are the questions people wanna have answers to before approving something. So, anyway, what, big roundabout way of saying, this is an MOU that we'll look at, and we'll get a, we'll also have a resolution for next week.
Okay. All right. Any other, any, any, anything else you wanted to address?
No.
All right. And any other questions for land use and planning?
No.
I noticed we have some folks in the audience, where we, we do have one more public commentary at the end. So if you're just in, in commenting, stick around, and there'll be an opportunity to do so. All right. Um, with that, we will move to, um, public works. And for that, I will look to council, or committee chair, running.
Okay, so, um, the mayor, um, talks about lots of what we've already done, and, um, including, you know, his, in his update. Um, Ann gave us a great update from the Parks Board and Sustainability Board, um, including, um, sustainability's next week. Um, they went on a park tour of all of the designated parks in town. She did have a comment that, um, perhaps we need to be a little bit more choosy about, um, the dedicated parkland that developers are giving the city, um, to be their little pocket parks and parkset, um, that they need so that they can actually be enjoyed by the people that live there.
Or, or usable in, at all.
Yeah, 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 right, um, but, yeah, so apparently there's some issues with some of those little parks that have been donated through in kind or set aside by developers, so. Um, and of course, the Brewery Hill, we were disappointed in not receiving the grant. Um, and Dave is going to send over, um, the criteria, I believe, to the park, to Ann, who will start with the Parks Board on, um, why, you know, how that points were, were tabulated. So maybe we can, we'll do some of that for the next time we apply for that. Um, we were number seventeen, and, um, the cutoff.
Don't, don't quote me on those numbers.
Okay, okay. Yeah. We, we were down on the list. We'll just put it that way.
That would go.
Okay, yeah, and so we were not really in the winning. Um, so, um, and she also talked about the tennis board, um, you know, raising lots of money. Um, and the user groups are going to meet with the Parks Board in January, so that everyone.
Start monthly, that each group will come talk with us, I hope.
Yes, so that they can work together and hopefully not be stepping on each other's toes and start working together with each other in the Parks Board. Um, and then, of course, we authorized the mayor to execute the contract for the utility build-out study. Um, and the main thing that we talked about in the last part of our meeting was, um, we are creating a new ordinance, um, because we do not have one, to govern, um, residential trash cans. We have policies and procedures in place, but they're not written down anywhere. Um, and so we, um, need to determine, um, when you get one can, when you have to have two, when you have to have one can, when you have to have two cans, how many units, um, do you get before you can contract with Republic Direct and get a dumpster? You know, all of those type of things, there's, there's nothing written down. Um, there's no, it, it's just all kind of policies and, yeah. So we have people who are paying for two cans, and they only have one resident, but because they have a water line hooked up to the garage, because they have a bathroom in there, they're getting, um, billed for two cans. And then we have people who have, um, ADUs, where they actually have a tenant living in there, and then they have the home, but it's all on one water line, so they're only getting charged for one can. So, um, we're going to be, um, coming up with some pros and cons of each scenario. We're gonna, um, look at our common practice that we're using right now as our starting point and refine it, um, and turn it into an ordinance.
Right.
So, it's gonna be a lot of work. We're going to, Dave's gonna talk to some of the other cities, um, this week, and hopefully get some feedback on how other cities are handling this. And, um, possibly talk to Republic and see if there's any other cities that do it the way that we do, where it's billed through the city and not direct. where it's billed through the city and not direct to the citizen, so.
And to, just to kind of tag on that, the new town home is being billed next to the Saint Sinclair Gas Station. Each town home has its own trash can, where the development that was approved on Silver Circle has a, a central trash container, so there doesn't seem to be any rules, one way or another.
Interesting. When you say central, you're meaning dumpsters?
A big dumpster, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and there'll be twenty living units there, and, but, the, the town homes, I forgot how many, there are sixteen, I believe, sixteen units, and they're all individual.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, yeah.
Was there, any?
Well, I'll talk to you later about that, yeah.
Question, uh, trash on our water bill is currently thirty dollars per can, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanna make sure that I have these numbers right. Um, one thing that I would just recommend for when you guys are doing this, or something to do at the staff level, uh, some sort of form, like an online form that populates into a database of one complaint for Republic, uh, specifically, that would just track, like, I didn't get my trash picked up, um, this can is broken, this is when I reported it, because as someone who works with a lot of trash cans, I've called the city, like, for instance, the reason I ask is, one of the units that we manage has a long-term rental on one side and a short-term on the other, we're getting billed for one. For, and granted, I haven't asked in a while, because this particular house still has a creek, or a spring running through the basement, and the pump out the back. Other problems with public works. But specifically, we had asked for a secondary trash can there for a long time, and get that added to the water bill, and never received it.
See, that's a case where you, you should have two cans, but you only have one.
Right, and we had asked for it-
And did you ask Republic, or did you ask the city?
We asked the city.
We, we, we should be able to get that for you, because that's in the current contract to do that, and furthermore, it's still at a discounted rate, because we pay about half inside of the city-
Right.
Because we get bulk, and, and, and they're calculating that half of those people aren't putting cans out, because there's part timers here.
Yep, and we had asked several times, and again, this is years ago, I just wanna clarify, um, this was before I was on council, or anything along those lines, but specifically, we had asked once, and we were told, you need to, or we'll get that added on, and we're gonna add that to your water bill, and we'll get that added, we'll drop off a new can. Never happened, called back, oh, you need to call Republic Services, they'll get you a new can. Okay, so we called Republic, they tell us to call the city, it was, no one knew what the protocol was.
Right, but we didn't start putting it on water bills until this year.
Right.
So, so it was-
Well, it's supposed to go on our taxes.
Right, but the process now, while it has been for a while, if you call in, any complaints, not working, you know, not picked up, we email, so we have a track.
Okay.
We, yeah.
Um, so we email Republic as soon as those come in and stuff. So it's up to Republic, so once it leaves our office, it's up to them to make sure, and they'll call, if people call back, if it's not, then we find that email, resend it and say, hey, we sent this on this date, still not done, can you please give us an ETA when this is gonna get done?
I'm-
So we put it onto Republic, because from our standpoint, that's all we can do, we can't, I mean-
Oh, don't have extra trash.
And that's part of why we're looking at performance clauses in the, in the contract.
This is exactly what I was leaning into, is less to make more work for you, but actually make less work for you, so when you are doing a performance clause, it's very easy to pull a database of, these are the clients, these are the addresses, and it's all a, a chart, versus having to pull up all these individual emails. That, that was my only recommendation.
So, um, so in this case, where they want another trash can, and it, it's a base, it's a duplex-type situation, there's two units there, so she should call the city and ask for a second can, and then it now would be added onto the water bill.
Yep.
But, do you have to verify that Republic actually dropped that can off before you start charging them? Because what if they don't?
What if they hadn't performed? Because that's it, it kinda sucks to have to track your bills all the time, and, uh, again, I think that-
But we have so many bills, so, I mean, how, I mean-
Again, I'm just-
So one of, one of the, one of the directives that I provided to kind of the early working committee that was on this, is this has to be scalable from a sta, scale, scalable and repeatable from a staff position, so it can't create a lot of additional work.
No, exactly.
And right now, what we do is, we just say, if there's a residence, you get a can, you're paying for a can.
Yeah.
But then, we get into what establishes a residence. Well, you have two water meters, that's two residences by all of our accounts, and so, that's, that's, that's what we're trying to address.
Can't wait.
Well, and just to provide a little bit, hopefully to simplify this process, why don't we use residences the same way that we use them for short terms? DES. And in that way, we're already getting the same list, we get it every year from them, and then you now have those residences based off what the emergency services says.
I, how are they determining a resident? Like, if, we have like a, because in this case, it's a garage with a bathroom, you know, and there's nobody living there, and, you know, in the secondary.
I, I think, I think what I heard is, you go back and you consider the scenarios, that there's one potential way of how you could determine-
Yeah, right.
What the can count is.
Yeah.
Out of curiosity, why should the complaints go to the city, why not directly to Republic?
Because the contract was us.
I, I, I think, I think the reality is, that, that residents call us-
They won't answer.
Because they, they view it as, they view us as the service provider, we're just outsourcing it to Republic.
Republic Services will not talk to residents.
And they have to answer.
Because their contract is with the city, not with the resident.
And they don't wanna hear from us.
Plus, I also think it's important that the city tracks it. Again, if the city doesn't hear the complaints, they don't think that there's a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I, and I'll think, we're, and then, um, just an additional side note I will put in, just because it kinda bleeds into this conversation, the trash cans we've identified that are not functioning, um, there are two hundred replacement cassettes, the little part that goes in, that are on order specifically for our behalf.
Okay, thanks.
And I've talked, but they have some, they have a machining problem right now, so I don't know when those orders are gonna be filled. Um, Republic has added another can that they are using, so right now, they're gonna be swapping out to another brand of cans as well. Um, and I think that, them responding to the, to the lack of support they've been getting from the vendor of that equipment as well, so. So, so, that's, you've got, you've had a couple of additional ideas on how to get that resident can count?
Yep, yep.
That's still in the works, that's not gonna be moving up, above the fold any, any time too soon.
But the state doesn't have anything that, that can, what the residence is versus the, there's nothing state that one?
It's always been, even with, in the planning board, it's always been bushy.
Yeah.
But, but, but one of the challenges we have is, we said what that number is, and that's what we pay for the full year with Republic. We don't, we don't go through and change it month by month, up and down, and up and down, so, so that's one of the, so like I said, it's gotta be scalable and repeatable, too.
So what we've been talking about is possibly using the property tax, you know, here's your lot, this is one unit, and if you want more than one can, you have to ask for it, and then, but also, on the flip side, is if you don't ask for two cans, and you need two cans, and your garbage is overflowing, you get a hundred dollar a day fine, because you don't have enough cans, enough garbage-
We did pass that part.
We did pass that, no, I support that, like, that sounds correct.
So it, it comes a matter of enforcement then, at that point, so these are just kinda some of the things that we're, we're talking about, so.
Yeah, I'm just, if, if you guys are thinking of residences, there's one, we're already tracking it one way.
Yeah, I know, yep.
And then in terms of performance clauses, because again, I know that there's not nearly as many issues as we used to have, but it might just be nice to have a submission form on our website, and then hopefully take some of the work off of the city clerks, where they're not getting phone calls, and, again, it's easy to track.
Okay, thank you. Any, anything else?
It's tough, I wanna go, I'm just freezing.
Okay. No, but did I, is there anything else you wanna bring up, um, Public Works, to those of you in the industry?
Any, anything, any other questions for Public Works?
Uh, no, I'm not gonna talk about the weed thing.
Okay.
Still, still thoroughly, okay. Any other questions for, for Public Works guys? All right. With that, let's move on to the next section of the agenda, which is correspondence. Uh, there was, uh, one set of feedback regarding the airport that we received after the packets went on Friday. Council has that electronically, you have hard copies at your desk, it will be included in the packet next time. Um, any other correspondence that anybody would like to introduce, or, or give us a heads up on?
Um, there was a text message yesterday from, I wanna say Betsy Scanlon. I, I don't know, I received a text message.
Oh, she wrote me, you, and, uh, Patty.
Yep. So, um-
About the ice rink.
Yeah.
And I, well, you might have gotten a letter from her, like, that I took you, to you.
Have we taken the steps to include that in the packet next time?
I will take a screenshot of this and send it your way.
I'll talk to you later, after the show.
Yeah, yeah, so essentially, just someone looking for an opportunity to voice their concerns about new proposals, and probably needs a little bit of education in terms of what that actually looks like.
I don't have to come from my phone number, because I don't believe I saw it.
And, and, and I anticipate that whatever it is we're doing for the tennis courts is gonna be a very, very similar process and discussion for the ice rink, because that's a large-scale project that, so very, very similar. So again, we're, we're doing our best to, to stay consistent and predictable on these things.
Yeah, essentially, the concern was, is our emails are accessible as council members, but not necessarily Parks Board, and I don't know if that should be a bigger conversation, of the Parks Board should have their, I don't think so personally, but I do think that there should be a way to get correspondence to the correct-
What I would probably do in the feedback on that is point out that the council representative for Parks Board is Councilmember Rude, and so they can send stuff to her, and that'll make it to the public record as well as the Parks Board.
Perfect, that's why I got in that group.
And, and then, and then, um, yeah, 'cause, 'cause her email is, as I say, they can certainly reach out to the Parks Board too, but if they don't have those emails, and I don't know that we quite wanna-
I don't think it's-
Take that level of involvement for all of our committees, so.
I don't think that would be fair or right.
You guys are getting the big bucks to be that liaison, so.
So, um, just, uh, FYI, Patty and I did meet with some residents over, um, across from the, where the ice skating rink, the current ice skating rink is, and, um, we had a great conversation, we visited with them for probably almost an hour, um, just kind of, um, how we are working through the process, what that's gonna look like, that there's going to be, um, plenty of opportunity for, uh, public feedback, and, um, you know, interaction with the citizens over there, and people being able to, um, get their questions answered, um, you know, and that nothing was set in stone yet. Um, it's very early in the process, and to, please, um, you know, I, I did tell them to keep an eye on the Parks Board agenda, and the Land Use and Planning agenda.
All right, any, any other correspondence to introduce at this time? All right, hearing none, what I'd like to do is, we will move into our final section of public comments for the evening. This is the opportunity for anybody to address the council and be heard on any matter within the city's purview. If you would direct your comments to me, again, this will not be a discussion, I know we're kinda coming out of the work session, where council is discussing. Um, this is your chance to be heard, and, and at the end of public comment, after I've closed public comment, um, I will give council the opportunity to, to respond if they'd like to, um, at that point. Um, but with that, we'll go ahead and open public comments. We'll look first to the chamber, if you would please step to the podium, state your name, direct your comments to me, and limit them to five minutes.
Hi, Mayor and Council, Bart Beck, and all I wanted to do was maybe speak to Councilman, Councilmember Rude's, um, concern slash question about what it's gonna look like on the tennis courts. So this is something that we've struggled with, as far as chicken and egg, because in order to give more precise answer to that, we have to spend a bunch of money for engineering work, and geo-tech work, and everything else. And we, we didn't wanna do that if the, the city was gonna say, what are you doing out there? We don't want you to take advantage of that site, or, or, you know, that's not for you guys. So, it's been a little bit of back and forth discussion, an iterative process with the Parks Board, and now starting in with the, the Land Use Committee and the mayor involved. And so, I don't have the final answer to that, I just wanna-
Yeah.
Say that that's what we've, we've been wrestling with, that exact same thing, so it's a very fair question.
Yes, thank you. Hey, can I have this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Bart.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, anybody else in council chambers like to address, council at this point in time? Council chambers going one. All right, looking to online, anybody that'd like to address the council online? If you could turn on your camera, unmute your mic, or raise your hand, that'll be an indication. Going once, twice, three times, okay? Um, last thing I'd like to do as we're closing is just provide an update on the water that's, uh, just in.
Oh, good.
Um, so, uh, they have the water turned back on, what they're doing is they're bringing up the pressure slowly. They have thirty PSI in the system up there, the goal is fifty PSI with stability before they call it a night, so they're still working on that, but people should be back to the point that they can flush their toilet and get refills and stuff. Um, they're just at a thirty PSI right now, so it sounds like they're making progress.
Is that just stuff that expires in the golf course, or in the US?
No, that's only on the west bend.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's everything, um, Alpine golf course expires.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and, uh, with that, uh, I'll look to our newest member to entertain the motion for number twelve.
I'm listening to it, Jerry.
Right, here, here.
Meeting adjourned, you?